Introduce yourselves a little better.
Yeah, I'm Alex Elchuck. I'm a senior and I've been in the Avid program for all four years.
My name is Ruben Gutierrez and I've also been, I'm also a senior and I've been in the Avid program for all four years of high school.
So how has Avid impacted your high school career?
Certainly like with just helping us get our grades on track. Every Friday they would have a grade check and see how many missing assignments you'd have. So on those Fridays they would tell you, okay, you need to work on these assignments. So after our grade check, we'd go back and do it. We do that every Friday. And so it just helped you miss like those like five point, those five points exams that you didn't do, so you'd go through those stuff.
It's impacted me and my high school career by certainly being more active, like with activities around the high school. They like to focus, Avid likes to focus a lot on community service and part of that is by helping like the after-school concession stand in our, in our cafeteria. We can help there too. Like the Fall Fest here in Garden, we have like an Avid booth and we kind of like give out information of what Avid is, we give out food, just be more active around the school.
Has Avid helped you prepare for your future?
Without a doubt it has. With Avid, I helped find like what my college I was going to go to and I recently got accepted to, so. I recently got accepted to K-State, so. And it just helps you look at all the colleges like around your area and then maybe across state, so. It just really helps you focus on what you want to do in your future, which is excellent.
Avid has helped me, especially in college selection. I was, I applied at WSU and I was accepted into it too. My sophomore year, we took the college trip to Wichita State and I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to go into nursing. So I saw the nursing program and they have one of the best nursing programs in Kansas, so that's why I decided I wanted to go there. It's helped me, well, in like in the aspect of community service, I know colleges look for that in your application and it's, we've done fifteen hours per semester, so fifteen hours per semester of four years, then that's plenty of community service that college will definitely look at.
Would you recommend Avid to incoming freshmen?
Without a doubt, yes, because also without the full, full four years, you get to grow and meet the other kids in Avid. And then you get this sort of Avid family a lot and then freshman year you're kind of rolling, you're like, oh, come on, you aren't really going to get bonded with these kids. But after growing up with them for four years, like you go out and have dinner with them, which is like just really cool. I would have imagined freshman self talking to a freshman, but here we are.
I, I would recommend it. Something new that I've heard just today is that they started the Avid program in the middle schools. For my middle school years, we didn't have that. We were just told about it. They give out, they did interviews and you would go, they would give you some questions and then you'd tell them why you're, like, why you should be considered as part of the Avid program. I did it because I was hoping for, I was looking for people to help me with not necessarily grades, but like more keeping on track, staying on the right track with college applications. As a middle schooler, you don't think about going to college yet, but after your freshman year, high school's gone by fast. These four years have gone really fast for me, so I guess, Avid has helped me with college preparation and just stuff that can help me in my adulthood or being older. But yeah, I'd recommend it for those who are looking for that helpful hand to keep on track and to help you with college.
Is there anything that you would change about the Avid program?
I wish we would go on a little bit more college trips, especially like our freshman and sophomore year, because just to really get out and see other colleges too. Also, just maybe somewhere around here, maybe some Oklahoma and some from Colorado. Because I feel like just staying in Kansas, we usually go to Fort Hays, Wichita State, K-State and KU. And I just wish we could maybe go to Newman or Washburn or some other colleges around the, either state.
I would change more like Alex said about the college trips, but mostly because of like sometimes the money isn't there for us to go. The freshman class, they were able to go to the college trip because they did, they worked their, they, they worked a lot to raise the money for college. The seniors and, well, the junior class and senior class, the money really isn't there right now. We came, we tried to come up with ideas to fundraise, but sometimes are like, sometimes they might not be approved because we can't sell food like certain time after school and then everyone's usually gone by then, so where are we going to sell to? A lot of the fundraisers, fundraiser ideas that we have, they're usually already taken up by other clubs and activities around the school, so we can't really come in again selling brand copy of the same, the same food or same clothes that people sell. So I think receiving more financial aid from the school district would help with us going on college trips and not having to worry about money issues.
Shun, if you want to speak just a little bit to who gets into Avid?
Yeah, so we have a selection process for Avid. There's an application first and then sometimes we have interviews, sometimes we don't. It just kind of depends on the applications that we receive. Sometimes we get all the information we need from that application. Sometimes we have a few more questions and so then we'll meet with students. But Avid is designed for students in the academic middle, so we try to look at test scores and grades and attendance history. But I'd just like to say that Avid is, the Avid strategies schoolwide that we use are for every student. They're going to help everyone. The Avid elective is very specific and specifically post, specifically made for students who are, I like to say, they are on the path to college, but their path might be a little windier than some other paths. And so they need the teachers there just to help straighten that path out a little bit to help them navigate all the different turns. We have a lot of first-generation college students. They may not have to be first-generation college students. There can be, there's a plethora of reasons why your path might be windy. We'll take any reason why your path is windy. If your path is windy, you can join Avid. And a lot of us have windy paths. I was a first-generation college student as well. I did not have Avid when I was in high school. I wish I had though, because although I had an older brother who went to college, he had kind of left and he, my parents did not remember. Lots of things have changed in seven years between the two of us and he was kind of a slacker, so he just did the very best for getting into college, whereas I was trying to do, go to a private school in another state and there were a lot more hoops or applications to fill out and do. And my parents didn't know how to help me, so I was really kind of on my own. The Avid class is, has a teacher there to help you through all of those steps and hoops. It's a great program.
How many applications versus admissions did you have in high school?
So we only do applications at the freshman level. We do, well, we actually have applications at all levels. Majority come from, for getting into freshman from eighth grade. This year, we only had a few that weren't able to make it into the program and those students, we, we did a much more focused job of recruiting this year at the eighth grade level, so we didn't get a lot of applications that were students that absolutely don't fit the profile. We used to get, you know, eighty applications, but thirty of them were from straight A students with two parents who went to college, who just, their path was a lot more straight. And so we're looking for those with the windiest paths. And so our numbers have, our numbers of applications have gone down, but that's because we're really focusing who we're targeting when we talk with our eighth grade students. So this year, I think we had four applications that did not make it into the elective program and that was simply due to scheduling. And that's one of our biggest issues is that when you only have one freshman section, which sometimes we can have two, but this year we only had enough for one, well, if that's up against the only honors English class that fits in their schedule and that's what they want to be in, then we have to have them decide between the two. So scheduling is the main reason why any of our students did not get in this year.
So how many students do you have in high school?
We have a hundred and forty-two total and we have thirty in the freshman elective. I don't have all the other grade levels memorized, so.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely. I was going to say, you can bring up the middle school Avid teachers and you can ask all your Avid questions.
For both of you, did your parents go to college?
Yes, my mom and dad both attended.
For you?
My dad didn't. My mom, she went two years, but I have a stepdad that went four.
You just start to think about yourself as being a college, like a college potential student, but what was it that made you say to yourself, I'm going to college? Or is it just something that was expected in your, in your household?
It was always expected, but I remember the first day in Avid, it was like the first hour, so we walked in like, so where do you think you want to go to college? And it was like, uh, I have no idea. And then I started looking and then it was about the end of the first nine weeks from my freshman year where it was like, okay, well, college is looking pretty, like a good idea right now, so let's just look at more colleges. And then when we went to Fort Hays, like, okay, yeah, college life is definitely for me, but I don't know about Fort Hays.
I wouldn't really say college was expected of me. I think I expect myself to go to college. I don't really think my parents are forcing me to go. I like with my younger sibling, my mom does, he, my mom knows that he's not really that into school, so she's not expecting him to go to college. But I think I want to do it for myself because I want to, I want more education further than high school. Like my parents, they're, they're financially stable, they're perfectly fine on the way they are, but I see myself as getting the four-year degree, doing, pursuing my career of nursing and then just keep following that career path.
More other questions?
I don't know who can answer this, but what does a grant pay for and what, what does a mound add to that?
We have multiple grants. We, at the high school, they're separate. So at the middle school level, we have the Fannie County Live World Grant and that is six thousand dollars per school, so a total of twelve thousand dollars. It can only pay for instruction or professional development for our teachers and it can, and I just lost the other thing it can pay for. It cannot pay for students and college visits. Oh, our fee to be an Avid school, there's a membership fee, it's about four thousand dollars per school, doesn't matter, that KH is a lot smaller than Horace Good, it's the same price. So that's pretty, with the four thousand dollar fee, there's not, not much you can do with the leftover two thousand dollars, so it's difficult. At the high school, we have a grant through the Fennepin Foundation and we generally have been getting ten thousand dollars. This year we got eleven thousand, so that looks exciting. So again, the membership fee, and now I'm remembering, KJ is now paying our membership fee. When a couple of years where we weren't, so I forgot. So we have eleven thousand dollars this year, which means we will be able to send about eight people to our Summer Institute, which is in Denver. And it is, as Renee mentioned, some of the best training that teachers can get. And that institute is not just for the elective teachers, they have training for every teacher. So there's math training and there's multiple levels of math training, there's multiple levels of English, science, history, elective teachers, career tech ed teachers, they have strands for everyone. Yeah, but again, the high school grant cannot pay for our student trips.
Jamie, do you want to, do you just continue on with that, just a little bit about schoolwide and what that would take in terms of training?
Okay, so going Avid statewide means that at least sixty percent of our teachers are trained by Avid and Avid strategy. And Avid is clearly a business and they are about to make money, but they are very good at what they do and they train teachers very well. It costs about fifteen hundred dollars to take our teachers to Summer Institute with hotel, travel and then the registration is eight hundred and twenty-five dollars a teacher. And that's for a three-day institute. I just lost my train of thought. Sorry, I have a new baby.
We, we send people on the.
Oh, yes, okay. So we're trying to get, our goal is to get sixty percent trained and it sounds like it's not that difficult, but one funding, you can't just send the whole school all at once because it's very expensive. And then secondly, we're training teachers who we think will stay and then they leave due to our teacher turnover. And so that's frustrating. The high school's sitting at about twenty-nine percent. I do not know middle school levels, but it will be low because we just sent one year of teachers through, so probably about eight of each, eight teachers in each school.
We're obviously closer at KH, just due to our size, so we're not, we're not actually that far away.
KH will be our first to meet the sixty percent simply due to their mathematics.
We've taken, I, I've been to two years, we've taken groups of teachers to one summer institute and then another training, so they've attended two different trainings, is that correct? Actually, three different, three different trainings for, for KH teachers, so I think we're, we're about one summer institute away from sixty percent for KH.
So where, where does, so eleven thousand, twelve thousand doesn't pay a whole lot. So where does the rest of the money come from, the school district?
I am able to use some career and technical education funds, so the way I do that is because they have the career and tech ed path. So almost all of my CTE teachers have gone to the career and tech ed path at Summer Institute. And the way that the wording is funded with our career and tech ed funds is that each teacher that goes to a training that's a CTE teacher can bring one teacher along for collaboration, so I can use CTE funds to pay for two if I have a CTE teacher going. So I have supplemented a lot there, but at the same time, I struggle with pulling too much money from career and tech ed into Avid, so trying to keep a balance there. And we have less coming this year for that, so we won't be able to send as many as we've been able to in the past, just because our career and tech ed demands were higher this year.
Question for the students. Can you tell me, do you guys have any out-of-pocket expenses to being in Avid? Have you had to pay money out of pocket to participate in being in Avid?
We've had for the college trips where it's like a twenty or thirty dollar fee for the hotel and then some money for souvenirs for the college.
And then one, one last question and not to be criticizing either school, but Horace Good, when you, when you talked, you said that you guys allow any kid to be in part of our, you don't have a set limit. Kayd said, you know, we have to cut them off at whatever number that was. You know, Shun, I guess in my opinion, our school should be equal. Why, why is it different? Just because of the size of the school?
We haven't, I'm listening to Jake, it would sound like they have more applicants than we did. So we're at the point where we had six seventh graders and seventh, eighth graders and so we just decided to take them all on and that was the same as last year. We took, we took them all on just because we had similar numbers. But with numbers being that small, we didn't feel it was necessary to, to like take any, not let any kids take it, so.
And like Jenny said, I think at the, at the high school level, if you, if we cast a wide net, we give back students who really don't fit the profile. We get a lot of students who are like, we said, straight A students who really aren't what we're looking for. And so it's coming upon us to kind of, it's not that we want to take students out of the program based on any set numbers. If we have students that fit that criteria, we will, we will find a seat for them certainly. So that's, that's the reason why we left it at thirteen. And actually, we, students, all those students are the ones that actually filled out the essay and filled out the application in its entirety. If they did that, they were in the class, so we didn't really turn anyone away.
Oh, and for, for us good also that, our kids get two elective choices. So with elective choices being at a minimum, if you have an interest in singing in art or orchestra or something like that, that's taken up one of the electives. If you were a kid that failed multiple classes, you're automatically putting in tutorial class for us. So elective choices are down to four all kids, which shrinks that number even smaller. And then we've tried to dedicate, we've got seventh graders in one class, eighth graders in another class to separate those kids.
And also just from the Summer Institute knowledge that I gave, Avid elective classes should be smaller so that the teachers can get around to all of the students and work with them one-on-one while they work with each other as a group, so that they have that accessibility to the teacher's knowledge of college applications and college readiness.
Well, I believe Avid is a great program, so I want to support it in any way we can at the board. And just one other question for the students. So say you don't get in Avid when you're a freshman or something, and junior year you decide you want to join, can you?
Yeah.
And have you had people, kids do that, students do that?
We've had a few, not a lot. I think because our Avid family grows tighter each year and I think all, we want that to happen, but at the same time, maybe we're not as open then because the families get kind of tight, which is great. But we have, we did actually have, last year, we had two seniors join the senior Avid elective. So that was, that was fun, good time.
You guys are doing great work. And I know, KJ, you've given us this number before, I'd like to see it in the next future, what we're actually paying for the Avid program, for the district and, and any grants that they're receiving. I think it's a board that, you know, we support these types of groups and I think they do great stuff, just like these two young men. It looks like they have a future well ahead of them, you know, K-State and Wichita State, so I'm pretty impressed, so thank you for being here.
Laura, did you have a comment?
A comment? I just went to the wide net comment that was made earlier. I know that counselors are doing a great job trying to encourage the sixth graders participating. So I know Henry came home last year and saying, oh, I'm in, I'm in the Avid as my elective. I'm like, I don't think you fit what they're looking for, because he's a straight A student, two parents who went to college, like his path is pretty straight. He's isn't probably going to be as windy as some of his friends are. I know we directed him somewhere else and he wouldn't necessarily be taking a spot for someone who might benefit a little bit more than him. So I'm looking forward to seeing it go schoolwide for those kids who can benefit from some of the skills that will be implemented schoolwide that might not fit the full criteria for the elective itself. That's exciting.
That is. If I could speak to that a little bit, Laura. One of the board goals is to look at Avid schoolwide, seventh through twelve, and as you can see with the middle schools, it's just been a slower start, rightfully so, recruiting, elective restrictions, et cetera. But one of our roadblocks is the getting everyone out of what we trained, to send them to Denver or Dallas. I've been both places for Avid training. It gets very spendy, so one thing we're thinking about proposing at some point is bringing Avid to us where we can literally train everyone at once. You're saving hotel costs, et cetera, and we can meet that sixty percent capacity at the high school level. So I know Mr. Morby, he went home ill today, he was going to be here and just almost kind of advocate for that, so I'm stepping at his place, but.
I would say that cost per teacher for that, yes, it saves hotels, saves travel, saves meals, all of that, but also the actual individual cost per teacher is less than it is at Summer Institute. I believe it's about five hundred dollars per teacher, whereas eight hundred and twenty-five. And every year it goes up by twenty-five dollars, every year so far, so. So next year will be eight hundred and fifty dollars for Summer Institute, so I hope that stops, but hasn't yet.
I just want to make a little more comment. This, this is really personal to me because I was, I think from a parent or as parents were not educated and I was on more than a windy path at times and some maybe very dangerous roads. And if I had not had one school teacher reach out and grab ahold of me and kind of guide me through a lot of what your program is guiding these kids through, I'm not really sure I would have gone to college. And beyond that, when I did get to college, I lacked so many basic skills that you are teaching these kids with regard to how to pick notes, however, in your time, that I quite honestly just, just about didn't make the first year of college. So when I look for a program, it's very personal to me and I, I would, I would sure like to see us do whatever we can to support the whole program.
I, I really love the Avid program and I'm glad as a student who went all four years through to this college and I have one right now. I think you all do a fabulous job for students. I think the, the skills that you teach are the skills they need to be successful, open school and out of school. And that's, that's really, you know, what they need to learn to be responsible citizens in the future. I was just wondering if there was any possibility since you, I, I think people at the, at the lower levels of the middle school don't really know what Avid is, so if you only have two electives, you want to sign up for something where you're not sure what it means. Maybe if you had some of your, your seniors and junior Avid students that have been in it for a while, go down and speak to the students at those lower levels. I think you might encourage them to be interested in and sign up for, they could see what they could do for them, so.
Okay, Laura, cheers on this.
Yeah, I have one more question. I'm just curious about, I, I know it would be more cost-effective to bring people here to do the training and we can get the sixty percent easy at the high school that way. But I remember going, doing a training that I, I know a lot of other people in the community did, the ex-prosecutor, law enforcement prosecutor's office, and they went to the training and they were able to focus more on the training because they didn't have those outside, oh, I have to go home and do laundry, I need to do this, I need to do that, oh, my kid's sick type of things going on because they were away and they were able to specifically focus on that training. Just playing devil's advocate or asking the question, is it going to be as effective if we bring it here versus sending them to Dallas or Denver?
Well, I'll, I'll speak in regards then as a building administrator who tries to get people to go to this. They're a lot like our students that you don't have a lot of control and then when they go onto their time, so summer becomes a lot of their time. We do hire for people from all over, so we, we lose a lot of those people back to their home state or back home and go away and get second jobs in the summer. So that list of who's available to go shrinks even more. And then when you're trying to determine what your numbers are and what do you have the availability to send, then that sometimes gets shrinks, shrinks even more if you don't have. So it has been difficult for us, we're trying to get people to commit to that summer time to go because they give up three full days to, a travel day and then two days of, of the training and get back, actually, well, four days for the Summer Institute. So they're giving up four days in their, in their summer where they have other things going on and all sorts of things. So it's been kind of tough, I know, for us to find people to contribute.
Just to clarify.
I have some comments and questions.
Okay, Jamie, go ahead.
Just on the bringing Avid, I'm not really excited anymore. If I, if I am correct, doesn't Holcombe have an Avid program as well?
Yes, Holcombe came and visited us last year and they are starting their program this year. So if I might assume what you're about to ask, this would be an opportunity where Holcombe could pay us to also come join. Liberal also has an Avid program, so we could bring their teachers in and they would of course pay the fees. We would not pay for their teachers, obviously, but we could get bigger participation, especially in some of those more unique strands, like some of those electives, where you have to have a certain number of teachers in each strand in order to have the price drop. So if we could get some from some of those other nearby schools, that would help us with costs too.
That's exactly what I was thinking, especially for some of those smaller schools. And I don't know necessarily how many have Avid, but what a great program, what an opportunity to collaborate in our region. And then things get cut out a little bit, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear on the recruiting of the high school. So do you target specific kids? You mentioned, you know, test scores and different things like that. Do you, do you target recruitment? And then my third question or last question is, is Avid one of the electives at KH or is it an after-school program?
At KH, it's an elective.
Okay. As far as the high school recruitment goes, we talk with all students about Avid, but looking at the test scores and different data points that the counselors are able to give us, then we, then we sent targeted letters to those families that we thought would, the program would most benefit their students.
So if students don't necessarily need the, you know, the lots of direction, you know, stuff, maybe go lots of directions to get in college, if they don't. if they don't need that specifically, can they not get into the Abbott program? Or can they, I guess if they don't really feel like their kids need that extra guidance, do they, it'll apply and possibly get into the program?
So we get into a lot of tricky situations there and it's difficult to have a class where you have limited seating. So what I, and it's hard on paper, it's hard to see, like I said, windy roads. You can't tell how windy a kid's road is by paper. So sometimes that's why we have the interviews, but we try to just put in the kids with the windiest roads first and fill the class from there, the easiest, you know, windiest to straightest and try to, try to figure that out. But you cannot tell that by paper, sometimes you can only figure that out with conversation. And sometimes those conversations don't happen right away, sometimes they happen in sophomore or junior year. And usually at that point, we've had some students decide, this isn't for me, and they've dropped the class and we are able to add those students in. So it's ever-changing, students in and out of the program, which is not my favorite part. I'd love to have everyone in Abbott if I could.
So is, is it a possibility to increase the number that we assess into the program or what path?
We, we need more, more, more space in the master schedule, at least at the high school level. That's what we're running into. And this year, just because of enrollment in English classes, when the program started, this is gonna get a little technical for a minute, but when the program started, they had all English teachers were Abbott elective teachers. We have not been able to move away from that due to the schedule and how the master schedule works. We would love to have a math teacher or a history teacher or teachers. You know, our students have to do tutorials and they always bring math questions to English teachers every time. And we would love to have some math teachers who are teaching that elective, but due to that master schedule and the way it works, we just don't have any more space. And this year, due to the number of students who needed, I think it was senior English, pushed out one of our Abbott electives. So at the sophomore level, we used to have two class periods and now we only have one. And it's completely full, it has thirty-six students in it, and so that classroom is just packed. And we tried and tried to move the schedule around and just could not do it.
But Dana, kind of it revened, that's why school-wide Abbott would be important. Because although it wouldn't be the elective for a select few, you've got those strategies across all classroom and content areas.
Great, okay.
Thanks for the question, Dana. That is, that does bring up a few, but I, I'm gonna get into that. It's just a challenge on the master board at the high school and I'm sure, sure scheduling at the middle school level as well. Laura, do you have?
So just a logistical clarification on the training. So in order to do that, Abbott doesn't schedule that during the summer. It would be late August or September before we could do it and we would need to schedule two back-to-back days in our, in our schedule in order to make the institute work. We also have earmarks and money in our professional development budget to be able to pay to do that. It's just a matter of, is it the right thing to do? And what do the logistics look like to make it happen, I believe? So that's kind of, kind of where we're at with the, so you have both middle school administrations represented, the high school administration represented.
Well, I know you're big on process, so at least we want to ask, okay, you just said there's a couple of decisions to be made, what's the process to make?
Well, it's a board goal to move towards Abbott school-wide. The process is to know if these schools are supportive of moving in that direction and having the training to support.
I just think it's interesting how exciting programs like this can be and yet how logistically challenging it is to implement them. You talk in terms of culture and developing culture for college and, and straightening the windy road and things like that. But logistically, always before the USD four-five-seven and the individual schools, there's a lot to think about there. I certainly congratulate all of you with Abbott for being here and spending all this time. And then the high school ambassadors as well in helping us understand and getting this report. Thank you very much and we'll keep, keep this in our, our thinking process.
Would you mind if we just kind of polled the schools as far as their commitment to that training since, since they're all here? Is that something they would favor us moving ahead with?
Okay, let me first ask if there's a comment.
I just had a question on, once the teachers or the staff goes through this training, is there requirements for them to, to get continued training later? Or I'm curious about the investment, basically.
So our Abbott elective teachers, if we brought this in, our Abbott elective teachers would still need to go to three years of training as they start. So we have one teacher who has now finished all three years and she does not have to go to summer institute next year. And our elective teachers do have to keep up their training and they have to go at least every other year after their first three. But our school-wide, there is no requirement to continue. But if we wanted to work towards a demonstration school, which is definitely my goal, we need to stay at that sixty percent. So my vision is, you know, one year we train, we have a hundred percent, okay? We've got it. The next year it might go to ninety, eighty, seventy. We might look at bringing it back when we're getting close to sixty so we can keep those, keep that number up.
Is it the same cost for all three years?
No, to go to summer institute, no, every year it goes up by twenty-five dollars.
But I mean, so the teacher goes the first year, it costs them that much and then they go back another year.
And it costs twenty-five dollars more? Yeah.
Excuse me, do you want to come back there, Paul?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Brad's here, Jared's here, Jenny can kind of speak for the high school. Mr. Norby went home ill today, I think, so what are your guys' thoughts? Is that something you think would be beneficial or?
If we can get everybody trained during the school period, I think that's the step we might take.
I also think that we've had discussions that if we tweak some control of how this goes, that the middle schools kind of look a bit more oversight right now without having to look through the high school and kind of be a satellite of that. I know we're a feeder to that program, but we're gonna have to be able to have a little bit more control and say into how we do in the form.
Yeah, I agree with Brad. We're, we're in favor of Abbott, but there's just some roadblocks that we have to, if the public school, it would be. A good thing for KH.
And definitely the high school's on board too, while we're.
And one thing I will mention is having, last year we had no site coordinator at the high school. So I was playing district director and site coordinator while bringing on two new schools, which is quite a bit. And I will, I will completely admit that, that I did not do that as great as I probably could have. But I'm excited this year that we have a site coordinator at the high school, so she can take, she's learning to take on those responsibilities. And so I should be more able to come into the middle schools and provide more leadership there that I wasn't able to do last year, so I'm excited about that.
Okay, Steve, can you? Well, with that, in the interest, interest of time, thank you all for the presentation, a very in-depth presentation. And we look forward to more information through the forum.
Thank you.